Question please.
Thank you.
No.
Is it somebody's? Oh, did I send that back with me?
Yes, probably.
I've already talked to Bill.
Hey, Bill.
On the minutes, which, uh, what's the due to that meeting?
I talked to Bill, I talked to Sarah.
September twenty seventh.
Was it?
September twenty seventh.
The Willis is in favor of it and, uh, yeah.
I'll put those on next time so that nobody knows.
Well, I have to say like that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Do any of your guys, can you say someone's name?
But I have to.
Come on in. You guys ready? Okay.
My presentation.
Gonna call the meeting to order.
Now, I'm trying to read my general contract everything.
Six thirty. And I'd like to remind everyone here that the meeting is live and being taped, so that everybody be aware of that. You'll be on camera as well as be heard. Uh, first, is anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, we'll go to you for the announcements.
All right, so, first off, I got my list. Hold on, hold on. It was in my pocket. So first off, we have, um, we just had free movie night, um, courtesy of the Boy Scouts on October ninth. Bill Shea was kind enough to come with his, uh, uh, Ecto One there, was, made it its glorious debut there for this time. Um, well, not debut, but, you know, a fun little treat for everyone that came out. Yes, appearance, there you go. But, uh, the boys, they showed, um, Ghostbusters, the movie, and it was to help, um, recruit some Cub Scouts for town. The Boy Scouts were putting it on to help recruit families and everything. But, yeah, a lot of families came out, it was free again, we sold, the boys sold, um, you know, popcorn for a dollar just to help kinda cover the cost, and they gave out a whole bunch of glow sticks to all these little kids that just kept running around and having a blast. But it was, it was a good night, there was probably a good forty to fifty folks out there watching the movie. And it was one of those, like, you, you always remember Ghostbusters, and then all of a sudden you're like, oh, I forgot about that part. As your kids are watching it, oh, I forgot about that part. We heard that a whole bunch of times, like, oh, I forgot about that part. Um, a little risque, but nothing bad, you know, it's Ghostbusters. But anyway, everybody had a good time, and it was, um, very fun for everyone that came out. And then we also had, um, this past weekend, the ribbon cutting ceremony at, uh, the playground. Uh, Parks and Recs was out there, and Ann Goby came out, and, um, the ice cream truck from Fidelity came out and gave out free ice cream to everybody out there. But, yeah, it was a nice ceremony, I tried doing Facebook Live, and the background between the road traffic and the wind, apparently, nobody could hear anything. So I apologize for whoever was trying to watch that, and it didn't, couldn't really hear too much on it. But, um, the kids are all playing there, it's lovely, they, they did a great job. Sander thanked everybody involved, all the people, all the, you know, different committees and, um, entities that helped along the way. And it went well, and everyone enjoyed ice cream. Um, including some of the Boy Scouts that were working on a, uh, the snack shack or an Eagle project, they wandered on over to get some free ice cream as well. They're like, what, free ice cream? Uh, but, yeah, so that was a good day. Um, coming up, we have tomorrow, just in case you haven't heard, there's a special town meeting. Cause there's always somebody that hasn't heard that yet. But that'll be at seven o'clock over in the gym. Um, we have October twenty third, uh, twenty, excuse me, twenty second and twenty third, next weekend, from five thirty to nine at Rieta Ranch, we have the haunted hayride, two nights, um, come join the Lions. There's a lot of skits this year, I guess, I think they're up to like nine or so. Um, but it's supposed to be a good run going through, um, it's loads of family fun. But, yeah, you can check that out at Rieta, both nights, Friday and Saturday. Um, we also have next weekend, on Sunday, we have the Harvest Breakfast, uh, from eight to eleven at the Rod and Gun, that is put on by the Hubbardson Scholarship Committee, that is a fundraiser for them to give away three scholarships a year. Um, the cost is ten dollars for adults and five for kids. They're having scrambled eggs, uh, pancakes, bacon, sausage, home fries, toast, uh, coffee. But it's, everyone come on down, help out the scholarship committee, raise some funds for their, um, for their giving out away scholarships for townsfolk. Uh, again, that's Sunday from eight to eleven at the Rod and Gun. We also have on Sunday, god, next weekend's gonna be super busy, um, we have the Children's Halloween Parade. At twelve thirty, it starts, you drop your kids off at the fire station in full costume with a bag of candy. They're collecting candy for townsfolk. And then come on down to the school, and then watch your children parade on by. Um, they would like spectators, so if you don't have children, come down and watch and wave to the kids, um, they love it. The parade ends at the school, and Flo, who, uh, uh, lives next door there, um, always does a magic show for the kids. She pays for the magician to come out?
Nope, sponsored by the Hubbardston Cultural Council.
Oh, this year it is? Okay, sorry.
And the Lions Club and the Park.
Okay, but she, yeah, she puts it on, and she usually does all that good stuff, she wrangles it all up. Um, but, yeah, so she wrangled up the magic show with the help of the Cultural Council and the Lions, and the what?
Parks Department.
And the Parks Department, okay. I wanna make sure everyone hears it. Give credit where credit is due. But anyway, so twelve thirty, drop your kids off, end up at the school for the magic show. And then we have October twenty ninth, which is, um, the trunk or treat fundraiser, this one's new. From six to eight, ten dollars per family at the Hubbardson Center School. I guess the PTO is bringing it up, I did post some flyers about it, and all the information is there. But they're looking for businesses or families to do a decorated vehicle. And I think that's who they're charging the ten dollars, I'm not totally sure about the whole fundraiser. But it's the twenty ninth from six to eight, and it's trunk or treat, and it's put on by the PTO. And then we have Halloween. Four to eight at the police station is the Halloween hoedown sponsored by Bill Shea. Got that one right?
You did indeed.
I'm trying. Um, so, and the Lions will be there with the food truck, which Rieta Ranch usually donates the food for the food truck. Trying to give all my props out. But the Lions will be doing the food truck, um, so come out and enjoy them, enjoy, what are, what are you bringing this year?
I'm gonna be Jurassic Park.
Jurassic Park.
And I'm gonna bring, uh, Sue the T-Rex.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm paying for all the police.
Yeah.
And for the DJ.
Yeah, okay, so T-Rex and Jurassic Park theme this year.
Don't miss the T-Rex.
Don't miss the T-Rex, is he, he's up and going?
Sue.
Sue, Sue. She, sorry. But trick or treating, and that's from four to eight, but trick or treating is five to seven on Main Street, High Street, Lovewell. I mean, there's other spots in town, but that's where most people go. All right, so that's what we got for October, and I'm gonna leave it at that, except for the fact that, um, we are already taking applications for the light fight. So, yeah, if you wanna decorate your house, or you'd like to sponsor, um, I have applications already out there. So, anyone that's interested in decorating or getting into that contest, I have all the information. We have three, um, categories to enter, we have the classic contemporary, uh, we have the go big or stay home, and then we have the, uh, brighter bold business award. So, yeah, so light fight.
Thank you very much, Katie.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you for everything you do.
A mouthful.
Thank you all for the support of all of these activities, and Bill especially, thank you also. Um, move on to the, uh, minutes and the consent agenda. Minutes of the meeting of September twenty seventh, and the library trustee appointment of Edward Cronin, who was here tonight, in case anyone might have any questions. This is Mr. Cronin right here.
I'm called Bob, by the way.
Bob, okay. So, um, can we get a motion for the, uh, consent agenda and any, well, in the discussion, any questions you might have?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second, discussion of questions. Seeing none. We'll ask, uh, for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Thank you, we are all set.
What was it?
Yeah, it was painful, wasn't it?
Thank you, that was nice.
Thank you very much, I hope you, uh...
I told you you weren't gonna be here long.
Well, thanks again, okay.
Unless it's something you wanna say.
I do my best to, uh...
We appreciate your, your signing with the town clerk.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, what time, when? Tomorrow?
I said she's open.
So tomorrow.
Take care.
All right, time after that.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving.
Hi, Bob.
Hi.
Well, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything for new business before we get to the old business? Nothing, okay. We'll move to the old business, first thing is the CPC committee. Wanna come up and sit with us, so...
Anyone can come. To the front of the class, right? Oh, you sit up here alone, right?
So who's taking the lead?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Do I have to give my name, where I live, right?
Yes, please.
Sandra Barry, one of us line. Um, Chair of CPC. So, your meeting, your last two meetings, um, I think the one on the twenty seventh, when Susan came and spoke to you, then the one last week, um, even though I wasn't able to attend, I did watch the video and everything, and obviously you had some questions, and you invited us to this meeting tonight. So I did send out on Friday, um, an email to you documenting all of the questions that you've had, um, based on what I saw. And I gave documentation to support all of them. So, I don't know if anyone had a chance to read that email and look at the documentation, but if not, we can go step by step. And we can start and, um, see if we're answering your questions, and see if you have any additional questions. Does everyone have, I mean, I make a copy of this, I printed out the email with all the things, so do you have?
I saw, I read it earlier on my phone.
Okay.
I don't know.
But I don't have a copy in front of me now.
Okay, um...
I would say go through it, just so everyone can hear it.
Okay, sure. Sure. You wanna look at this one? So one of the first questions that, um, had come up from your meeting was public procurement requirements and prevailing wage. And this project does not, um, apply, those guidelines does not apply to this project per CPA. So I gave the information, um, I have one copy here, to David last week, and he came back, and he confirmed with town council that absolutely we were correct, that per CPA guidelines, this project does not apply, I mean, public procurement and prevailing wage does not apply to this project.
Okay.
So, do you want more documentation other than talking to Dave, him confirming that, or?
Yes, I can confirm that, uh, because it's a grant of money for a nonprofit organization, the, the public, uh, procurement rules and the prevailing wage rules do not apply. Grant agreement, however, is a place where you can in- insert conditions if you wish, uh, that they would have to abide by in order to receive.
Wait.
We doesn't, uh...
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know why you would want to, but you could theoretically, um, insert prevailing wage into the grant agreement. That's the controlling document.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that you do that.
No, I, I would see that we would wanna do that.
Does anyone have any other questions regarding that? No.
No questions?
Chris?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so the next question had to do with a structural engineering report. And in the documentation I provided, um, Mary, who, um, submitted the application, is the Minister of the Evangelical Church. Um, they have a report, that the report hasn't been done, but they had reached out, they do have a proposal, um, from this Duca and Critterium Engineers. And actually, do you wanna speak on this, cause you spoke to them just recently as well, but this details the proposal of what they would do.
Um, the proposal was sixty-four hundred dollars, and we do have the funding to, um, have them do that engineering study. Um, they would be able to schedule us within about three weeks or so.
And you said it was sixty-four hundred?
Yes.
What, the, the article? Yeah. Um, so, so the article as it is written was that it was contingent on this report being satisfactory. And originally, we had said to us, but it was been added that the board of selectmen, um, would be involved in that as well. And, and, um, accepting that report.
And that's how it's gonna be somewhat presented on the warrant?
Correct.
States subject to this inspection, et cetera, in terms of what is, comes out of that.
Correct.
That's how it will read to the town and everything?
Correct, and if this doesn't pass, it's a no-go. The project dies at that point, for, for this year.
Yep.
Right? So, but hopefully, um, hopefully that'll come through fine. Any other questions about this, this is very detailed as to what they're going to do?
Just have one question for you, so you had mentioned that if it comes through as satisfactory?
Mm-hmm.
How do we define satisfactory?
Well, that's gonna be based, well, I, I, I guess based on this, that they're saying it's gonna be a sound building. Um, I'm not an engineer, that's why we included the board of selectmen and ourselves being satisfied with their report.
Okay. So it's completely subjective?
Well, it's structurally sound.
Okay. Based on the engineering report, if they would give us an engineering report and state that it was a sound building. Okay, but when we get asked the question tomorrow, at town meeting, if they say, what does satisfactory mean? The definition we're going on is that the engineering report comes back stating that it's structurally sound, and that meets the requirements for CPC as well as the select board.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It's...
So, uh, do I understand correctly then that the vote will go forward just contingent upon a, uh, good structural report?
Yes.
Excellent.
And, and the recording of the historic preservation restriction and the signing of the grant agreement. And then they have to put their money in, where are we in, how does the payment work, you could explain it? So, so how payment works with CPC is until that project is completely done, CPC does not pay anything. So it has to be a completed project for CP fu- CP funds to, um, be dispersed. So, the company and the church is, you know, is relying on that happening, because if it's not, um, completed, we don't give them part, partial money or anything.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and the signing company does understand that, um, but that's, the church is actually funding a third of this cost. Um, so they're fronting the front part of the money. Um, so if the company wants the back part of the money, they have to complete the project.
No, but this was a concern of the board also at the last meeting, in turn, when we were talking dollars and cents, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for example, we were curious where that came from.
Mm-hmm.
How old that quote was, et cetera, and so on. And subject to now, eh, this kind of inspection, uh, which we, we now have a figure of sixty-four hundred, cause it was a question of what's that gonna cost, but, and then whatever the findings are,
Mm-hmm.
could have a decisive factor in terms of if we go full with it at all. If all of a sudden, we get a report that says this needs a ton of work, and this and that, before you can even think about restoring it, that would be a, a game changer.
Well, my, my understanding is, is that once, um, it was voted to go ahead with the project through the town, that we have two years, um, for the project to be open, for it to be completed. So if there was something structurally that needed to be worked on, certainly, we would do that right away, so that we could get started right away.
No, I understand that, mm, eh, totally, thank you, and, but it also would affect the, uh, overall cost too, and that's what, I, I think will probably come up tomorrow night anyway, people are gonna talk, so, but thank you.
Well, we, we will...
Yeah, but that cost wouldn't be included in the hundred grand, that would be on the church.
Yeah.
To fix it.
Right.
But, no, yeah, exactly.
Cause, yeah, cause we put...
Right.
And actually, that's a, that's a...
That's important to point out, though, too, especially tomorrow, yeah.
And, and that actually is like an eternal, um, bylaw of CPC here in Hubbardston, is that we, um, put that in our bylaws a few years back, that projects had up to two years to complete them, because sometimes you ran into glitches here and there, like a COVID. And, um, and, and so we did allow people, um, projects to take two years, and if they're not gonna get it done in two years, they had to come back to CPC and give us a report, you know, and, and decide whether we were, um, going to close that program, that project out, because it wasn't gonna go through, or whether they just needed more time to complete it.
The, um, the siding company as well is, is not going to start the project until we, um, put down our first, our third of that cost.
And...
We've already made a, a good sized deposit, and, um, you know...
And that's a...
Plan to (laugh) make sure this gets going, cause...
Sure.
We wanna be good stewards of the building as well, and, and we appreciate, um, the town, that's for sure.
And that deposit that the church made down holds this price until January, right?
Correct.
Isn't that why we were trying to get this up and going now? Okay, um, the next document that you have is the actual, um, proposal from United Home Experts and the pricing. So that provides you all the information as to, um, what the contract would do, you know?
Now that, I had a question.
Yep.
Does the steeple get done too, or is it just the four of walls?
Um, the bell tower is included, except for the slats on the bell tower, we would need to do those ourselves.
The, the louvers?
But they would do the, the sides and the, um, edging.
Okay, all right, so just the louvers that are kinda like broken, like need, that need to be replaced?
There's some other woodwork that it needs to be done too.
Okay.
And cram this in. The soffits around the building, we did not include because it was pretty pricey. That was could, can be done with wood. Um, and repainted, um, just replaced, uh, much less expensive than trying, than trying to get the same look with, um, using the, the siding material.
Yeah, the composite. Now, the composite, is that like the composite decking, where it's like the plastic?
Um, it's, uh, I think we've got a sample here.
Is it in there, come on?
Is it not in the box? So how'd that, if we pass that in?
Ha.
Okay. Thanks. It's a high quality, um, composite, and it has been used in other historical buildings in Massachusetts.
And this is going where?
On the side of the church.
That's the side, the exterior.
That's the siding.
It's the siding sample.
Okay.
The old, um, panels, I mean, the wood...
Yeah.
Would literally be removed...
Yeah.
From the church, it's not going over it.
Okay.
Um, part of their project is to remove it because of the lead paint issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which some people have questioned if it is lead paint, because they did do something back a number of years ago to try to de-lead it, um, when they painted. However, we had an inspector, um, certified state inspector come last year, and, um, I gave the report to Sander here that states that there is lead paint on all kinds of different exterior surfaces. So, we went with the siding because it's gonna literally be removed...
Mm-hmm.
From there, um, that's part of their, their project. And then, um, the siding would go up, and we wouldn't have the issue with the lead paint any longer.
Okay.
Okay, so, so originally, you were gonna paint the exterior, but then you changed?
Couple few years ago, when we proposed, we were going to paint, but, um, since that time, you know, the outside has deteriorated quite a bit, and to paint now would be a huge, huge project. Plus, it then becomes an issue every few years to (laugh) keep it up, so, um...
Well, in the long term, this is probably the better move anyway.
This'll be, this'll be really nice for a long time.
Yeah, this is gonna, yeah.
Cause she's, the building's been there since eighteen twenty seven, so...
That's right.
Oops.
Maybe we'll be another two hundred more years of something.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions in regards to the proposal of the work to be done and the pricing of it, it's all laid out there?
Chris, Helen?
No.
No, I, I read the, I read the report.
Okay, no.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and so the next document I included was a loan documentation from the church, from Mary, because they are funding a third of the cost. And we just wanted to provide proof that they did get the funding, and that this would be able to be a completed project. I also did include with the original, um, documentation of the pricing from the United Home Experts. They did actually get three estimates, and these were the other two estimates, I don't know if people just want to look at them for comparison or not. So then the next was the loan documentation to prove that the church does have the funding to, um, fund the third of the cost. Any other questions? Um, I also included the insurance, um, certificate for the building, just to confirm that, um, the building is being adequately insured, even right at, now, let alone as the project is going to go on. The other two things we were going to discuss, and David talked on this earlier, is, um, the historical preservation restrictions and the grant agreement. And if you need language, I know David shared some language with us, we have language here. Um, but also, if this does pass at the town meeting, then we would be meeting to come up with the language.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, we can discuss it now, but really, we would probably meet after the fact and discuss the specific language.
Yeah, historic preservation restrictions need to be approved by the Massachusetts Historic Commission, so it's a matter of...
That's the thing you sent us, right? On our package, Hapley, yeah.
Right, so, yep, so...
Okay.
So you all have to agree upon, on the preservation restriction, and then we send it off to the IMHC, and they tell us what we're really gonna do, agree to, um, then, uh, all three parties sign off on it, and you have that, uh, talked in time.
We have a copy of the one done for the Williamsville Chapel in town in two thousand and ten, if anybody wants to get it. Oops, I'm sorry. Forgot your name tag there.
We know who he is. He's been around for a while.
I mean, it just gives you an idea, it's very detailed. It has, tells you how to say why the building's historic, what you plan to do, and it gets recorded.
Yes, please.
So that's, that's here too, so subject recording of historic preservation restriction and signing of a grant agreement, all prior to commencement.
And they have included in our package, uh, one from Hapley, and it's something that was done, and it's very, very extensive, but, uh...
Yeah, this looks like...
It gives you a good idea of exactly what's ahead for, uh...
Yeah. What kind of language we'll have to use.
Yeah.
Yeah, this looks roughly the kinda same kinda, yeah. Yeah, a lot of legal, legal mumbo jumbo.
Does anyone see?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have an extra copy here for Alan, so look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's always a fun read to read all the, yes, it's like very long.
It's a little intimidating to us as the committee.
I can read...
We gotta get over the hurdle till we get to a word...
I can read it, as long as the kids aren't around.
I'm gonna do it.
Once the kids are around, I'm like, no, can't read that, cause I'm not gonna be able to focus long enough to, without somebody nagging at me about something.
Uh, there is a template.
Yeah.
And town council will help us, so this can be done. And it's been done before. Here in town.
So do we have the deed that says on file here with the town yet, or?
No, there's no deed on file with the town, but...
No, but, I mean, the one that says that it's supposed to be historical, or, excuse me, a religious...
And so that's on the original deed?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if Mary brought it, I tried to print it, cause you can just go to the registry room.
Okay, so we, but it is...
Pull it up, look at it.
It has been found, it's not like it's missing, or anything like that?
Yeah. No, it is there, um, I just couldn't get it to print.
All right, that's all.
That's from the family that donated the land originally in eighteen twenty seven, that it would be a church in perpetuity.
Yes, and that language isn't there, I think the last time the deed was, uh, had language add to it was like nineteen sixty-four or something, or sixty-two, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I brought this first page of, um, just to state that it's who the owner is. It started with, um, Ellenwood Justice, um, eighteen forty-four, yeah.
Is that the family that donated it?
Yeah, and then it went to the First Calvinistic Society.
The Justice did? Mm-hmm.
David Bennett, um, probably was maybe a pastor, I'm not sure. And then it, um, became Evangelical Congregational Church of Hubbardston in, um, nineteen forty-one. So as far as the deed, that's how it, um, the, the actual, how the ownership was listed. Cause people ask, who owns it?
But does it... Yeah, does it say?
Is it stolen by the congregation?
Cause there's, there's always that question about who, like, there was a restriction saying that it had to be...
Yeah, that I do, we, is in the original deed the wording?
Okay.
And, um, my understanding that, that, um, I don't even know if it's even still appraised anymore because of all the...
My, yeah, my aunt Barbara was trying to dig out a copy for me.
It's called a...
But I, I have the, uh, I have a translation, not a translation, but the original one is very difficult to read in the old English. And we actually have the original in a safe, because it's very delicate.
It's delicate, yeah.
Um, but there is a translation of it, and I can send you a copy.
Yeah, cause if that, yeah, that should be seen by more people. I'm just, uh, that's always the question, you know?
You know, it's, it's called a right of reverter, the land reverts back.
Yeah.
And there's like a whole body of law regarding rights of reverter. But even if it didn't have a right of reverter, it's owned by a charity.
Yeah.
And it would have to go through, like, if it didn't have a designated successor, like a, they call it cyprae process...
Yeah.
To find another owner, it could never, it wouldn't resort to, you know, the people on their, whatever their church board is. The deacons won't own it, the deacons couldn't sell it to you. You know, it's, it's, it's...
I just mean, like, it always has to be a church, right?
A church, that's, well, they could go to court, you know, if there were no churches ever, and they could say, like, chap, chap, the Chapin, or the, um, Williamsville Church became the Historical Society.
Okay.
Right? So, I mean, there are ways, unencumbered, but it would be very difficult.
But it couldn't be like...
It's not something ordinary citizens could do.
Technically, it would revert back to the family that gave the land, correct?
Well, they could find, I mean, there's, there's solutions to all kinds of title stuff.
Technically, I'm saying technically, but that's what it would mean, right?
Right, well, the right of reverter laws, you have to take a look at it, there's, some rights of reverter have been challenged in court, and then, you know, and, uh, there's, and succeeded, right?
Yeah.
Um, private rights of reverter, for the most part, have been done away with.
Yeah.
Uh, you know...
Cause the, well, they...
My daughter Mary's a Jewish person, it reverts back to me, or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of... My daughter Mary's a Jewish person who reverts back to me or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of rights of reverter that have been abused over the years, so there's law in that area.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it it is important to know that the congregation cannot sell this church. They do not own the church.
Okay.
Right?
You can, you know, be sure that we have absolutely no.
Well, I just. I I'm not questioning it. I I think you guys are, especially you, Mary, I'm pretty sure you're stuck there for a while.
I know.
But I'm just like, that's always the question, like one of, there's a few issues that always pop up around this church.
I know.
From the last few goes, when I sat there in the back and watched it happen.
I know. Yeah.
And it's, one of them is who, what happens if they decide to sell?
Yeah.
You know, number two is, it's a religious building. And number three is, why does it seem like there's a business being run out of it? My answers to those are, especially the business one, is that's Scott's, he has to earn a living to eat.
Scott's an ordained, he's an ordained minister. He lives there and he owns his business.
But, yeah. Yes.
He has a mobile um.
Yeah, but he has to pay for himself to eat and be clothed and stuff like that, so it's not like it's a business run out of the church.
Of course, yeah. It's not run out of the church, it's his own, yeah.
He needs to sustain his own life.
Correct.
So I try to explain that to people. And then, you know, the other one is obviously because it's a church, people and but it's, we're looking at it historical. And then the other one is, what happens if they're gonna sell? You know, those are the three problems that always pop up. So if we can solve those or at least make sure people hear the reasons behind those, I think this actually has a run, you know? And I I feel like it should, I wish it goes this time, I really do, cause that building just, it's one of the last ones in town that just. Like I don't know how else to say it, but it just, it makes the center of town look crappy. And I'm trying to say that very nicely, like that's, like that's really pretty.
I know, we're running the same, we're the same.
I know, and it just, it would look so much, it, we don't want our town to, that, we don't want that to like be what people think of Hubbardston. You know, we shouldn't have a church that is in such disrepair or historical building in such disrepair, you know?
People need to know that their taxes are not gonna go up because of this. They need to know that, right?
Exactly. It's money that's sitting there too. It's not like we're borrowing, it's not, it's money that's already sitting there. That's already, it's there, ready to go, so.
And also, we should point out that council has checked it and it's legal.
But that's a big concern.
Yes.
It it is legal to go ahead with this project. And to the other point, I remember talking to the ladies before we started tonight. I said one of the selling point is, center of town will be all new, so that building is gonna stick out even more.
Yeah, even more. Well, especially cause the last few buildings in the center of town have been spruced up.
Right.
This would be the time to get to do this with the building in the center of the town and everything will just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and also that we have the funds to, you know, so we're not borrowing, like you said, because we might have run into problems because we ran into problems before.
Yeah.
Um that's why we made a um decision at CPC to fund it and vote. Let's just do it, bite the bullet and, you know, hopefully that will, you know, ma- make the town understand we're supporting this by, you know, backing it up with all the money and not borrowing. I do have the um opinion of KP Law too, if anyone wants it in regards to this.
I'll probably take a peek.
Sure.
I just wanna add one thing too, is if you've been inside that church, the second floor, you know, was raised.
Thank you.
The second floor is a completely pristine sanctuary from the eighteen hundreds.
Yes.
So it's not like Scott is living in the sanctuary.
Yeah, I know. Yes, I'm.
And that needs to be clear to the town. I mean, lots of churches have ministers that are were attached parsonages or people that lived in it.
Yeah.
And actually, that building's better off with somebody living in it.
That's my thing too, Max, like you don't want a vacant or security.
Given its condition to be in.
Yeah, if there's water leaking or anything, God forbid.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I think um is interesting is, you know, that building, that that end of town had historic buildings. There were all, that all were burned down in a big fire in nineteen twenty nine.
I didn't know that until tonight. That's fascinating.
And they included, yeah.
Hotel and everything.
Yeah, the uh Hubbardston Inn, remember the Berry Inn, a huge inn, Bennett Hall, town fire station, four houses. So there are very many historic buildings in town that are in, you know, public or quasi-public hands, you know? And that's why.
Yeah.
So I think it's an extra reason to preserve this building. It's the only one in the whole end of town that wasn't.
These are all things that should be brought up tomorrow night to put to discussion, you know?
Especially preserving a historic building, cause that's really the focus.
Yeah.
It's not the church.
No, I totally agree.
It's the, it's the historic building.
Yep.
But yeah, I have been in that church numerous times. And yeah, you go upstairs and it's like, whoa, you're like wa- it's like a time warp.
Yeah.
We're working on that too a little bit.
Yeah.
They they put a lot of work into it.
But we've we've mostly been spending our time because we do occupy the building and use it as a worship center. Um we needed to update a lot of what was inside, you know, our bathrooms have been completely redone. We actually have a handicap access bathroom now. Um that was quite a project. Um our plumbing, our electrical, um heating, ev- every, you know, we're updating as much as we can as we've been going along. And so now it was time that we knew we needed to work on the exterior because we did, that was next on the list.
Um so can can I just jump in here? Um you know, I'm hearing a lot of talk about um, you know, what happens going forward with this church? And maybe we're skirting the issue or maybe I missed it, but the town is going to invest a hundred thousand dollars into this church. What protection does the town get should something happen to this church?
What do you mean, like something happening? It's insured for seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Okay, and what if it gets sold?
Well, so that's we addressed, it can't just be sold. That's what he, Jeff was talking about earlier.
But what is the, what is our recourse?
The historic preservation restriction follows the property, so it's always gonna be there. Uh and the grant agreement, you write this in these terms into the grant grant agreement that should they sell, then they owe us the money back. Or should something happen to the building, knock on wood.
Right.
Uh the money comes back via the insurance.
Right. Okay. All right.
Um so the one other piece of support we have is that the Historical Commission um had discussed this and they did actually, I'm sorry, I haven't heard reading this. They did actually vote to um support this um this project a hundred percent. And so their um the Historical Si- Society in town is in full support of this.
And will that be brought up also tomorrow?
Actually, that's the Historical.
Oh, Commission?
The Historical Commission.
The Historical Society is more of a social thing, that's more the official.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is signed by Martha Holderson and.
She's the secretary.
Okay, and the members are, Gary Kangis, Brianna, Whitney, Ernie Newcomb, is that what that says?
Gary Kangis is the president. Yep, Ernie, right, Ernie?
Yeah, yeah. Carol Whitney and Martha Holderson.
Who will be speaking under half of the warrant?
So CPA can't support, we can't stand up at town and advocate for this. I mean, we did all of our um due diligence as a committee to make sure it met the CPA criteria. Um and we had all the supporting documentation to say that, that's why we passed it on to you, which means we pass it on to the town. So people individually can get up and stand and talk about it, but someone can't get up and say, I'm from the CPC and I, you need to support this project, cause blah, blah, blah. You can stand up as an individual. So I I think Susan plants on talking.
Well, the reason I'm asking is these are things that need to be part of whoever is presenting it.
That need to be addressed, right, exactly.
Correct.
The key things that need to be brought to the town's point of view.
So. Well, so basically what happens is um they're gonna pass out a flyer. There'll be a flyer passed out with all the information on everyone's seat so they can read it. And obviously, they read the motion and whoever wants to talk and ask about it will get up and talk about it at that time. Um if no one has questions about it, you know, I mean, there probably will be questions, it's happened before, but yes. So depending on what the question is, whether it's addressed, um you know, like what came up tonight, Susan or myself or Alice, whoever wants to get up and talk about it, will talk about it. Susan's the treasurer, she'll probably talk about it if someone has a question about our budget and stuff like that, but um, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh I didn't read my town warrant, but is this uh already on the warrant recommended by the, uh recommended by the select board and the finance committee?
No, yeah.
It's not on the warrant because we needed to have last week's meeting and this meeting to answer some questions that we had. The questions have been answered, dealing with the engineer inspection, so that the town will be made, will be told tomorrow night that subject two.
Yeah.
This.
So so will the select board vote tonight to recommend the the thing?
We are approving it. Recommending.
Because I think that after the uh, you know, recommendation is always given right after the article is read. And I think it would be a strong plus if if the select board gave their recommendation that they'd like to move forward with the project and approve it.
I thought that's what we were doing tonight, whether we were going to recommend or not recommend.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so so the posted warrant will have um recommendation pending for all the art, financial articles from the finance committee. And it will have recommendation pending from the select board on Article Six. But the handout at town meeting will have a complete list of recommendations from all the committees involved. So that's what people will be looking at tomorrow night.
So that it's not necessary then for us to make another recommendation tonight into form a motion or?
Well, right now you have recommendation pending for the select board for Article Six. So what they're, what they're asking for is that you take a vote um to recommend the article.
So we could, that's correct. Mm-hmm. That we rec- recommend the article, that's certainly okay with me.
Yeah, I think I think that would, that would be a strong indicator for the town as well.
Once you folks have done it, that's. Right.
That you take that vote and and they write after the article is read, the one with selectmen could say that at this town, at this special, at this regular meeting.
Good suggestion.
That it was recommended by the select.
All right.
Um I would just appreciate some clarification as far as being an advocate for this. Um I am on CPC, but I have individually gone to three different committees just to get some information out. But in full disclosure, I said, I'm here as Josephine citizen, even though I'm part of this open space and historic society. Um so for tomorrow night, I definitely wanna just do bullet points on the money, as was suggested. Just here we are, this is how the process goes, this is where we'll end up, but we can do it cash, no debt and so forth. But as a citizen, I have, I mean, I can say that, right? I'm advocating it as a citizen, even though I'm on CPC, so, right?
Really?
I I just wanna clarify here and not, you know, right?
As a ci- citizen, can any citizen.
Okay, but in full disclosure, the reason that I know anything about the money is because I took on that role just to keep things more current and and to see where we are.
Town meeting. Which I think you could also explain.
Yeah, I mean, so, yes, okay, all right, then that's, I just wanted to be sure it's okay.
Does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, nobody's gonna think that you're uh into into the business of siding buildings.
Okay.
You're not trying to do anything unethical. You're just exercising your right to free speech in a public forum.
All right. All right, okay. All right. Okay, I will keep it brief though.
Like I said, bullet points, reel it in, reel it in.
And the only other concern that I I think some people, my question is, why are we doing this with siding versus painting it? And there is no way that those boards that are on the side of that building will ever hold paint for more than five years.
Well, plus the lead issue.
Yeah, yeah.
And and then you've got the big lead issue that all of that would be, have to be uh sanded off. And you've got lead paint flying everywhere, so it's a hazard to.
Yeah.
There's a fine for that.
Yeah.
So if that question comes up, this definitely should, makes to be the answer.
So, so in regards to that, so I did write to Dave and I wrote to Renee last Friday asking if Mary, cause she lives in Worcester, can speak at town meeting. But I haven't gotten a decision on that because I think seeing she's the one who put the application forward and has talked to the, has the report regarding the lead and stuff. And you know, hopefully that won't be a problem.
So I haven't heard from the moderator on this issue, but it seems like a very reasonable request.
I think we've had something similar to that.
Well, like, but they.
I have a cat lady that live in Hubbardston and she was allowed to speak, but I did ask the moderator.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, they have, they really have to request, yeah.
Yeah, same with like superintendent and stuff like that, they all speak.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um yes, uh she's from out of town, so she has to sit in the.
The sides, but.
Side section.
But she can speak.
But uh the moderator has the right to grant her the ability to speak toward the issue.
We can speak to Renee as soon as we get there.
We've we've done that in many, many other town meetings, so, you know, I don't see that that would be.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
No different than having the superintendent of schools get up there and speak to us, you know, she's not a member of the town, yeah.
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 Yeah. Okay, anything else?
So.
What, any other questions?
That's my next question to them. Any other, any other questions?
Did anyone else wanna say anything?
Will that gentleman be at the meeting tomorrow night? You did a very good job in asking the pertinent questions.
I just have one question for David. So on the warrants, David, do you happen to know, cause under Article Six right now, it says Finance Committee recommends passing over relative to Article Six. Do you know anything on that?
That's uh the recommendation that they made when they met.
Do you know anything about, did they happen to say why or mention?
Because they wanted the engineering study done first.
Okay.
I thought it was the preservation restriction and the grant agreement. And it's the chicken and egg thing. Why pour money into those legal costs if the town doesn't wanna support it? So I think they were.
It's the structural engineering.
Oh, structural, okay.
But the same thing, why do the structural engineering if the town votes a dead?
But they're doing that, the town isn't responsible for that. So they're, they've got skin in the game for sure, the church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious why why Finance Committee had their.
No, that's a good point. Well, I I was hoping that maybe they could have been here tonight too, just to have some input or at least be informed that select board is meeting tonight to revisit this. And um so maybe since I went to that other meeting and they they were, they were letting me know that, so you understand that we're not gonna support this. I was thinking, yeah, and I drove home thinking, oh, forget this. And I said, no, wait a minute, maybe they still hope. So I might just give her, I mean, would that.
Why don't we ask if the what a selectman can actually send a email to them tomorrow saying that you've decided to support this project?
Well, that would be the next thing I'm gonna ask her is a motion.
Yeah, so that way we could see it.
That way they at least know.
And that way it's coming from them.
Them, it's it's from the official.
All right, now why don't we move to that? Uh we'll entertain a motion. If someone would like to make a motion that we uh as a board recommend the warrant?
I'd like to make a motion that we, as the select board, recommend Article Six of the special town meeting.
Okay, motion made. And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Now to get that point, could we, again, the the email or whatever you were talking about?
Start again to finance.
We'll get it out tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you, David.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to talk about.
Thank you all very much.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, no.
Uh-oh. I see worried faces.
Um because we're gonna be discussing whether or not we need to move forward on the warrant pertaining to the grant that we requested as the Vietnam veterans. Perhaps they should.
Sure.
Stick around?
Sure. Oh, you guys wanna come up here?
Susan, let's sit back down.
So this is a Vietnam memorial.
Aye, aye.
Oh, it's a Vietnam memorial. Yeah, remember Ed Blantry came to our meeting and talked about it. Yes, I do. Do you wanna have my seat? You wanna sit up here? Go ahead.
No, no, no. Okay, we'll move on to whole business, uh Six B Veterans Memorial Committee answering questions concerning the banner and the discussion of the bid. Dave's indicated to me that there's one bid for twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Gentlemen.
Good.
So I put together a sheet for a little perusal. And we talk about, first of all, the banner and we are asking, thank you very much for having me here as a representative of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee. And I am asking for permission of the select board to display the banner uh on the common. The banner is five feet high by ten feet long. And I actually have it with me, if you'd like to see it. It's a high quality banner. It will withstand the weather for a protracted period of time.
I've seen, I've seen it.
And I think that it shows the progress that we wanna show the town, that we are moving in the right direction. And that's what we put on our Facebook every time we make some progress, uh every time we have a get together. So that the public, should they look at the Facebook page, are able to uh see that we are moving in the right directions. Our goals were established uh back in March and our goal was to have the design and the funding in place by uh Memor- uh Veterans Day this year, which is the eleventh of November. And then our most most ambitious goal is to have the monument, which will be a tribute to our Vietnam era veterans dedicated on Memorial Day of two thousand twenty-two. So I think that the banner is a wonderful way to show um those that passed by that we are in fact moving uh along and in the right direction. So I'm asking for permission from the town. I read the bylaws and um so, but I'll let you in.
So that would, that would replace the wooden?
Uh it would indeed replace the wooden one, yeah. I uh I mentioned I could put it in front of it, but I I think that uh we have stanchions to set it up and that uh. it would be, uh, as you can see, it's well done, and-
Now, this is what you're going to be doing for raising the money, correct?
Mm-hmm, well, that is-
My, my question is, would this be also on, next to the banner?
No.
Showing the progress of what you're doing in terms of the money?
It because- As a matter of fact, we don't have to anymore, because that's the really good news.
Well, they hit the mark.
And the really good news is in conjunction with all the efforts made by our committee and, um, the absolute generosity of the public and many of the businesses.
That's great.
And the companies in town, that thermometer Jeff represents, uh, what we've raised towards a forty thousand dollar goal.
That's incredible.
As of the twelfth of October, we have raised thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
That's incredible.
Wonderful.
Terrific.
And today at four o'clock, we got a, uh, a quick email, um, a check had been sent to Laurie Reed. It should actually go to the treasurer, but, uh, from, uh, Ron Burton, who, uh, is the Ron Burton Training Village, for an additional three thousand dollars.
Oh, nice.
So that puts us up to thirty-seven thousand nine hundred, and there are more donations in there, and more donations coming. And Ed, who is a former member of the committee, but now is a proactive, um, representative of the town, has been very active in pursuing that, so, um, that is the reason that we're here also, because, um, with that in mind, um, we have figures for you pertaining to what we, where we believe we're at. But that is contingent upon you as the Select Group accepting the one bid that was in, and, uh, I know that, uh, Dolores was, uh, there on, on Tuesday when the one bid was opened, and then the committee has offered to assist the town in any way that we could to make this, uh, reach the table tonight, so that you folks can make a decision. And if you decide to go forward with the one bid that has been submitted, because there were recommendations that had to be checked and so on, and references, and so on and so forth, at that point, I can go forth and describe where we stand in terms of how that money will be utilized, and therefore, whether or not there is a need for that article to be presented tomorrow night, because of the generosity of the public and so on and so forth, um, but I believe that you will have to move forward on that recommendation.
So it looks like you want two motions from us, essentially, one to accept the bid, and the other?
I start with the banner, everybody's getting this, so, yeah.
The other with the banner? Okay, alright, and, uh-
I'd like to make a motion to accept the placement of the Hubbardson Vietnam Veterans Memorial Banner on the town common.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second for discussion?
Second, okay, open for discussion, go.
I just have one question, on the second sheet, um, where the specifications are, it says twelve inches thick. Is that on the banner, is that, that's a monument, right? Okay, just checking, cause I was like-
That's a really thick banner.
Well, Chris and I were like, I don't know about-
Wouldn't need a monument.
Okay.
I'll drag me in.
All set, that's-
Some heavy-duty stuff.
That's all I had, Josh.
I thought that I would provide you with the, uh, specific dimensions of the actual monument, uh, because those were part of the, uh, prerequisites sent out, uh, with the bids, uh, but this will be something that we're gonna look at for the next two hundred years, just like the Church Building and be, uh, very, very proud of. It's gonna be two-sided. Um, as of now, we have, uh, at least two hundred names, and we are looking to finalize that list. As the monument is designed, it's capable of accepting two hundred and sixteen names, and we have done everything within our power to outreach to the citizens and potential veterans to, um, establish whether or not they would be eligible. And of course, the Vietnam-era period goes from the fifteenth of, uh, pardon me, from the, uh, first of November nineteen fifty-five until the fifteenth of May nineteen seventy-five. So needless to say, we've had more than we expected, but of course, we wanted to be all-inclusive. We didn't wanna leave anybody out, because they were left out far too often. So, uh, we have been surprised, cause anybody who lived in town, or still is in town, or moved into town after, is gonna be eligible to have their name, uh, represented on the monument. And as it stands now, um, the letters will be one inch high, so they're gonna be very, very visible, and, uh, and then we are going to also, um, identify those who served in country, that is in Vietnam with a star in front of their name. So that also leaves us space for what is probably gonna be the obvious, in spite of all of our efforts to outreach to, I mean, I've made so many calls and a lot of outreach has been done, we're bound to have missed somebody. And so that will leave room on the monument to add names. The monument will have names on both sides, and as you can see by the description, the scroll at the bottom will say welcome home, because that's what Vietnam veterans didn't get, and on the other side is gonna have the rest of the names, and there's gonna be a scroll, and the scroll will say, all gave some and some gave all. So, we're pretty proud.
Very nice, yeah.
So.
So, you just answered my questions about the potential to add names to the monument, should summarize if you had missed somebody. Do you have the banner? I'd like to see the banner.
Absolutely.
If we could. What exactly is on every line? What is the, what is the information on every line?
Last name, first name, middle initial, and then, that's it. Uh, and then in front of the name, uh, if they did serve in Vietnam, uh, then it would have a star in front of the name.
That's great.
Yeah. Be happy to show you the banner?
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
That's why I brought it.
Banner holder.
Banner holder.
Now that's actual size?
At the, uh, this is five feet by ten feet, and the actual monument is going to be five feet high by nine and a half feet long, so it's slightly-
Very nice.
Very nice, yeah. Good job.
That's excellent.
Now, I also wanna point out that there is something you can scan here at the bottom, and, um, as of tonight, should everything go forward the way it's gonna go, I'm gonna be covering that, because we're not gonna need any more money. And I'm gonna explain to you, should you like to know, exactly how that money's gonna be spent. So, there it is.
So now how many, how many names will be on the front? You said there was gonna be a total of what, two, two forty?
Uh, well- We have, now we have approximately two hundred, a little more than two hundred.
It'd be, uh, two hundred and eight names on the front, two hundred and eight names on the back.
No, 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 not two hundred and eight on each side, and it would be two hundred and sixteen or two hundred.
Uh, I'm sorry, one hundred and eight, sorry.
Yeah.
My mistake.
No, but this allows us to have, all the other monuments in town either have three-quarters of an inch or a half inch, these are gonna be a full inch.
Put down on the back.
Yeah.
And they all have a bronze plaque, these are gonna be engraved right into the stone, and the stone is, uh, a black India identical to the Vietnam Memorial in Washington DC.
Oh, that's nice.
Because that's what we wanted.
Wow.
We didn't wanna settle for anything less than that, so.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on the motion?
Very good, thank you, nice job, good work.
Alright, then, motion's been made in second on the banners. All in favor?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so take, oh, accept the motion, uh, if we could, to accept the bid of twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars for the memorial video.
Oh, was, did they, did Bill wanna talk about that, or has he good talked about that, was that it?
Bill, anything you'd like to know, uh, I'd be happy to. Now, um, the process was a learning process, as, uh, David could tell you, um, and the first group of bids went out, and we did that on our own, and then we found out we couldn't do that because of the non-of bid, so, um, a second series of bids were sent out, uh, bid opportunities were sent out, and, um, from what I understand, we had just one bidder?
One bidder out of six.
Okay, but everybody who bid the first time got notified the second time, and only one chose to respond. And the total for that was, how much, David?
Twenty-one thousand one hundred. That covers the manufacture and delivery of the monument.
That does indeed, that does not cover the setup.
Yeah, who does that?
Um, we already have reached out to, um, a couple of, uh, potential bidders on that, so the, uh, cost of the monument rounded off would be twenty-one thousand. The cost of the setup would be approximately two thousand, that is putting it in place, getting it all set up. Um, we then, because we decided to expand on what the committee could do, and we realized that the monuments in the center of town needed repair, restoration, or re- repair, restoration, or replacement, we examined those, and so we've also reached out, uh, to get some preliminary numbers to get that all done, and, um, what I have here is a high estimate, and we believe that it can be done for less than that, but I wanna give you the high estimate, and all unofficial, because we can't go forward until you ever say okay, um, is seven thousand dollars. And we've taken into consideration that we may have to engrave some extra names, and, um, Ed, what was the cost of engraving a name? Was it eighty-five dollars per name? Wasn't eighty-five dollars a little, was it?
I don't know, we don't really have, uh, uh, we don't really have, uh, a bid yet from Lemonster Monument. They're probably the ones that would come after the fact to engrave the other names. So we're gonna have to get a cost from that, but with the cost of the monument and the cost of the installation and the cost of refurbishing all of the, uh, other monuments, you know, we, we may be in the, with some added expenses we might have, we may be in the area of thirty-five thousand dollars, but I think we'll probably top out right around forty thousand dollars with fundraising, and we've gotta keep that money in, in the account, so that we can do more, uh, engraving in the future if we need to. And at some point in time, then whatever's remaining in the account will, will get turned back to the town, so. With us raising, uh, with us meeting a goal of forty thousand dollars and receiving a bid from a company that will, uh, allow us to do it within the money we've raised, we would like to ask the, uh, we, we would like to ask the Select Board to pass over Article Seven, and not, we won't be using any CPC monies.
That's why we asked you to stay.
Oh, well, we appreciate that, but, so this is what I would say. I would say it's already on there, let the town vote, cause what, cause they could vote it down, they probably won't, but they could. Because you can always just turn that money in, in the spring, we can't move that money, well, I guess we didn't have the article, but why not just keep that money there just in case you run over? Cause you can always turn it back in the spring, we'll just put it back in the coffers.
We won't need it. We won't.
Who makes that decision?
Yeah. Just wondering.
I mean, can they, can the town pass on a warrant based on a-
Yes, sure. I mean, if that's, if that's the wishes, we just simply will tell the moderator that we're gonna pass over on that warrant, on that particular article.
I mean, you can-
I think we really appreciate the CPCs, um, uh, addressing that, um, and, uh, but, uh, and we're not too proud to accept the money,
Yeah.
Okay.
but I don't see any reason why we're going to need it, in fact, uh, we've already had other ideas, because, uh, per, uh, my input with, um, David, uh, Ryan doesn't like to have money left over in the account, but, uh, we also thought about, if we do have money left over, how about a scholarship? Have a scholarship for Vietnam-era veterans' grandchild.
Kids. Yeah, oh, that's fun.
And, uh, you know, we would follow all the guidelines for a typical scholarship, uh, and I think the committee would, uh, be willing to, uh, take that, uh, upon themselves to, uh, work through that, but, um, I think that, uh, that might be an appropriate way if that is within the venue of, uh, uh, our, uh, permission to do that.
Any objections on the board if we decide to have, have a pass, pass over Article Seven, is it?
Yeah.
Article Seven, yeah. I think we have to, probably have to make a motion to amend our prior recommendation to become passover.
Yeah. Well, how, what's the feeling of the board on this? I have no objection to it.
They don't want the money.
And we sincerely appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, just trying to help you, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, um-
Then, then you know if you have future meetings, that the money's available.
I'll ask for a motion.
Do you want a motion on the bid first?
Um, yes, why don't we do that first?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board accept on behalf of the town of Hubbardson, the bid from Land Pro Landscape Inc. in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars for the Vietnam Memorial Monument.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any discussion?
I, one quick question, David, you haven't had a che- a chance to check the references yet, right?
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have? I'm all good?
Yeah, they're all good.
Then I have no further questions.
Okay. We'll run it to you there.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Uh, question, I'm sorry?
I have, I have one, Mike Stoll, Five Lombard Road, um, you went out for bids twice, one that they were disallowed, um, because of the bidding procedure, but of those six that I, I think you inferred that, um, six were contacted, how many of those bid the first time, and why do you think only one bid the second time?
I have no idea.
None?
Let me, let me give you the information.
Because normally when you only have one bidder, you, there was like inquiries beforehand that the bidders had some kind of issue or something, cause normally people want the work, so, um, I've done a lot of bid openings and solicitations, and when I see only one bid, I ask at least a couple of questions to try and, um, determine why that was. And it may not be an issue, it might be a timing issue, it might be a specialty type issue, but you at least ask a couple of probing questions when you only have one bidder.
So let me, uh, give you a list of the people who were, uh, invited to bid.
Thank you.
Um, there's the EHB Revocable Trust, there's Milford Granite, uh, Lemonster Monuments, Peppin Granite Incorporated, Ackerman Monument Company, Empire Granite Monuments, and that's it.
And that sounds like all, you know, the typical kind of contractor or vendor that would provide this. I guess there just wasn't significant interest, uh, there wasn't the profit margin that they thought they could get, or the low bidder, um, and this was an invitation for bid, not a request for proposal, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very, very pleased that we can now, and what's the next step?
Next step is I send them a letter saying congratulations, start your work, coordinate with Mr. Shea.
Okay. Mm-hmm, super, yeah, I have, I have the contact, but, uh, will you copy me on that or how?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks very much, it's good to know, okay. So.
Anything else you wanna?
Well, I, I did have the, um, I had contacted the committee, of course, told them I'd be here tonight, told them what I'd be talking about, and, uh, now I'll follow up and let them know what transpired, and I did have a majority of the committee already agree that if the bid was accepted, and we know how much money we have, that we would, uh, ask for the warrant to be withdrawn, but I'll follow up with that, so. Uh, now, uh, I know that there's a lot going on tomorrow night, and, but at some point, how do I communicate to the town? That where we are and how we're doing, other than Facebook, I mean, I want people to know, uh, and, uh, do you have any suggestions, recommendations? I mean, they, twenty-three people have looked at the video from the last meeting.
Well, my suggestion-
I looked at it twice, cause I had to do the, I was a separate.
My suggestion would be if, in fact, we vote to, uh, pass over the article, that
Tell them why.
you or have someone, someone be there, because I'm sure the question will be, could be raised, why are you passing over on the article? And then you can get up and give them all the good news.
I'd be happy to do that, that's kinda why I asked it.
I'd say that would be a way to do it.
And I don't wanna encumber the, the time of the special meeting for something that's not literally included on it, but-
You'd be answering a question and I, I, you know, I think would be in people's minds, why are we passing over, especially those who are definitely interested in doing this? Why are you passing over on this, you know?
So if I were to talk for five minutes, that's not gonna be an issue pertaining to the-
I, I don't see it as a problem.
Okay, because what I would do is tell them why and, and tell them where we're at, and-
Absolutely.
I wanna also have an opportunity to thank the citizenry uh for the generosity and their support, so.
That's perfect, what time to do it.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan. It sounds like, so we need a motion then, right?
Uh, for.
To pass it over the article.
Um.
Or can we do that on the floor?
You already have a motion.
Yeah.
Or do we wait till tomorrow night to do that?
You can wait till tomorrow night. Uh, it's a posted meeting of all the town committees. Um, if you wanna pass, if you wanna recommend passing over tonight, you can do that.
True. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board amend its prior recommendation for special town meeting Article Seven from recommends to recommends passing over.
Motion's been made.
I'll second that.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, we'll see you tomorrow night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ed, also.
I guess the Red Sox will have to wait.
Tonight and tomorrow night.
I know, yeah. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for staying.
This is yours?
Maybe it's yours. Interesting story.
Bill, what time might you be getting there tomorrow? 'Cause I have a personal question I've got to discuss with you.
Okay, what, the meeting starts at seven?
Yeah.
Okay, and uh when would this warrant determine at seven, so it's gonna be coming up? Okay, so find their quarter seven, let there's a chance.
Sure, yeah, I'll look for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Try before one or uh?
No, no, it's it's about this, so.
Thank you. What's that?
I don't think we have any questions on the Board of Directors. We've recommended it, Alice. That's always a good sign. Thank you.
So you got that going for you.
Yeah, back in the old business, we're gonna be uh passing over six C, the roof project change order, 'cause it's.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, the change order coming, it's gonna be a credit and we'll just wait till we've got all of the dust, so.
All right. So we'll go to D, the uh VSO. Um, David has told me that three towns had a meeting and you wanna take it all with Dave?
Yeah, so um we met, uh, when I say we, and we're talking about um the town of Hubbardston, town of Ashburnham, town of Westminster, town of Princeton, we met with the city of Worcester.
Oh, Gardner.
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 We're definitely not merging with Worcester.
So um we um trying to uh provide a regional of veteran service uh services of using Gardner as the host community. Gardner uh found out that because of their, of an inter-ministerial agreement requirement by the Department of Veteran Services, um they need to add staff, there are certain staff minimums that apply in these kinds of inter-ministerial uh arrangements. If Gardner was going on his own, there's no staff requirement. But because they're adding by population, a couple hun- a couple thousand people, um they need to hire the equivalent of one and a half full-time employees for in the, in their town hall. They need a full-time administrative assistant, which could be uh cut into two part-time positions. And they need a part-time assistant to veteran service officer. Um, the cost to the town of Hubbardston would be in about eleven percent of the total cost of a sixty thousand dollar increase to Gardner's budget, so that's six thousand six hundred and some odd dollars. I'm waiting for more information from Gardner. The 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 difficulty is the trying to get veterans' benefits to the vets after November first. 'Cause we've got a veteran service agreement that says it's given until that time. So we're gonna try to fast-track this as as quickly as possible. Um, there may be some cost savings that we can use to mitigate the increase. And those cost savings have to do with a very close review of our Chapter One Fifteen uh benefits that we pay directly. If a veteran qualifies for benefits, there are two sources of funding that could uh pay those benefits. There's the towns themselves under Chapter One Fifteen, or there's the federal government. And our goal would be to move as many veterans over to being paid by the federal government rather than the town. And if we can identify six thousand dollars of savings annually, uh then then it's a wash.
What's that probability?
I think the probability is good. I think that it's easier to deal with uh Chapter One Fifteen than it is to deal with the the veterans uh at the national level. So I think that path of least of resistance appears, and I'm not saying it is, appears to be the case in all five towns that are thinking about forming this district. It wouldn't hurt for us to review those benefits anyways.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
So right now, David, or before, when we were just with Westminster, we were paying eight thousand dollars a year. So this, if, you know, assuming things don't necessarily work out, we can't push everything over to the federal piece, then it's doubling our cost. And before we enter in, are we gonna know, is there enough time to actually do the analysis to know before we would enter it into an agreement to figure out if that cost was gonna be there?
I can't give you that assurance. Um, I'll get the information over to Gardner as quickly as possible. They have a specialist who does this uh kind of work.
Okay, then my second question is, so that adds, it adds, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me just paint the, there's gonna be startup costs. Gardner's going to apply for the uh regionalization and efficiency grant in order to cover those startup costs. The other difficulty in this whole situation is that the Department of Veteran Services is going to paperless claims filing. And they have a portal and only VSO, recognized VSO officers can utilize that portal in order to get those benefits going. So we need to get somebody on board so that we don't have a backlog of 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 benefits.
And we don't wanna risk not i- being on it, period, you know. There's always, regardless of that, I see your point, but in the same sense, we need to be representative and, you know. We've had some difficulty over the last three or four, five years now with keeping a veteran representative. And so this is what's come out of the, all of that problem, so that's the other issue we, we don't, and I know Ryan feels strongly about it too. We we want to be part of this, so.
Well, the other thing is, is there any other option? I don't think there is.
I don't believe there is.
Right?
Can we regionalize without Gardner?
We've uh explored that avenue. We tried to do it with Berry and.
But with the other three. So before, when Westminster, Ashburnham, and Hubbardston once did this, the original conversation pertained to whether or not we need to become a district. It it was a large discussion, a long thing. Ryan was concerned about it and we ended up moving forward 'cause it was the only option we could. At the time, Princeton was outside of the scope of us. They were doing their own thing. But we had always thought if we added another town, that might be big enough to regionalize. I just, I have a lot of apprehensions about, I I don't feel like at this point Gardner has demonstrated the best services provided to us in regional care of things. And I I I'm very concerned about the service we're gonna get as the town of Hubbardston from Gardner as a regional provider. And I'm wondering if the other three towns had any interest in saying, okay, you know, we're all rural, we're all small. We might be more palatable to the state on a regional um grant request as well to do that. Is that something, I'm assuming the conversation has come up?
Yeah, we've had preliminary conversations with uh with um Berry. Uh Westminster has put in writing that they're gonna go with Gardner.
Okay.
Um, I can explore it with Princeton and uh Ashburnham.
Okay.
Those two won't be big enough to, I don't, I don't think. Westminster's the biggest one out of all of us, uh Ashburnham and Princeton, I think. Ashburnham's smaller than us, right?
Yes. No, they're not. They're over six.
No, they're not. Okay.
Westminster's slightly bigger. I think they're about eight or ten, somewhere in that range.
Yeah. Yeah. And Princeton, I'm not sure.
Princeton's tiny.
Yeah, it's so, I don't, with only the three, I don't think we'd warrant.
Yeah, Princeton's thirty-four hundred people, Ashburnham is sixty-three hundred people.
No, we'd have to have four.
Yeah.
And um.
If Westminster's going with Gardner, I I I think we're kinda stuck. Berry, 'cause Berry's the only other way to go on the opposite way. What about Templeton? What the hell does Templeton do?
Uh, I don't know what they're doing.
'Cause Templeton's got what, eight thousand?
I think they're closer to ten.
Are they closer to ten?
I thought they were.
I can reach, I can reach out to Templeton.
Yeah.
You can reach out in the same sense. We've been, we've been dealing with this for several years and we may end up with, you know, with nothing.
Yeah, I know, I know, we're kicking their ass, I know. I, I think we should explore the Gardner, but reach out to Templeton just out of curiosity.
I would hate to see us end up, you know, alone and having nothing.
No.
So what's, what's the financial plan to pull, where are we planning to pull seven K from the reserve fund?
Yeah, we could, we should be able to do that. I mean, this is certainly unforeseen and unplanned for.
And then what are we looking at? What would that leave us in the reserve fund? What do we start out with this year?
We started out with thirty thousand, so there'd be twenty-three.
Right, and then if we entered a gr- in agreement with Gardner, is there any way we can do it as a trial run for a short period of time, like a year?
Yeah.
So that we're not committed to having everything? And I guess I have two more questions. So do, based on, you said we were approximately eleven percent of the sixty thousand dollars, what is our current population that we're serving for veterans that would be covered by this?
Our current pop- population, I think.
How many veteran, oh, I'm sorry.
How many veterans?
Yeah.
That I couldn't tell you.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one people?
Ninety-one are qualified for benefits.
Okay, so it's.
Of one kind or another.
All right, so we have ninety-one folks and the cost of the veteran service officer would cost us about sixteen thousand dollars or just under that.
You get that sixteen thousand dollars back on the cherry sheet, uh if it makes you feel a little bit better. You get a seventy-five percent reimbursement of the benefits, the qualified benefits that you pay out to veterans. So in the long run, it comes back.
But that's, but that's the benefits to the veterans. It's not the cost of providing the veteran service officer.
That's correct.
So usually that ninety-one, I'm not worried about the ninety-one people and the services we provide them 'cause I hear what you're saying, we always get seventy-five percent back, it's usually a year or two behind. I'm more concerned about the sixteen thousand dollars and making sure, because even if we use reserve fund this year, that's a huge, that's doubling the amount we spend on that service for next year. And that's gonna take away from the rest of our pe- I I understand, we're stuck, right? Like, there's not many options and so forth. I don't like it. It doesn't make me happy. And I also, like I said, I just, I have strong concern.
I'm sorry, you, no, I'm laughing with you.
Uh, it doesn't feel like it's a big step. Um, I'm just, I'm just concerned about making sure that they get the services, as we've talked about before. When you met with them, would this service actually provide a human on-site in Hubbardston?
Yeah, I specifically asked that question. Uh, you're you're used to having the veterans' agent on-site. Is it four, four days per month or four days per week? I think it's four days per month under current agreement.
Definitely not four days per month. Here in town or in Westminster?
Weekly, okay, four hours. Four hours in Hubbardston, under the old agreement with Westminster.
Did they actually come here though? Did the veterans officer actually come?
From Westminster?
Yeah.
I'm told that they did.
Yeah.
Where, where'd they?
Probably right here.
I, well, 'cause I'm just saying, I'm here all the time and I don't.
I remember being int- we met, we had trouble keeping them.
We, yeah. Well, 'cause there was a desk.
But Ryan is introduced and all and then.
And then the desk left.
So we would have to uh use the conference room in the other building.
Yeah.
Okay.
For privacy.
Okay.
To talk about that. So they would be expected to hold office hours. And that was something I specifically asked the mayor this morning, 'cause I knew it was gonna come up.
All right, so they would or wouldn't come here?
They will come here.
They will come here.
Yeah.
For four hours a week?
Well, whatever, whatever we need, whatever.
Whatever the breakdown agreement is.
Yeah.
There's no guarantees. It's gonna be four hours, but I can't see it being less at that point.
Yeah, particularly if we have a backlog.
Yeah.
So what, if anything, do we need to do about this particular?
I wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are.
Okay.
And that the, I'll be asking for the hard decision on November first.
So at another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Heather or Chris?
So I, I'm not clear on the, on the sixty-six hundred dollars. What, what, you mentioned sixty-six hundred dollars, what, what exactly was that for?
So that's uh the three f- uh the 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 three bodies that they have to uh uh hire at the uh town, city of Gardner. Uh, so that's the full-time assistant for about twenty-five thousand. And then the assistant, uh part-time assistant veteran services officer for about thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
So that gives you sixty. And our, our portion of that would be eleven percent.
So it's increasing our line item from eight thousand dollars to eight thousand plus six thousand six hundred annually?
Okay. Okay, well then we'll be d- addressing this at another meeting anyway, so. Okay, and moving on to the uh encroachment license agreement, all we need to do is sign it, according to what Dave was.
So this is our first one.
So. God, that was one.
That's like my worst signature yet.
So David, this is in regards to the construction project on sixty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, and this is for the post office?
Real, you know, Realty, it was a.
Yeah, it's a Realty.
It was a Realty company.
Water Wheel?
It's Sixth Main Street.
Well, it says picket fence and a USPS sign.
Yeah. It's in front of the post office.
Okay.
While you're signing it, we'll move on. Uh, any items we brought up about tomorrow night's uh town meeting? If, from anybody who's not.
What was the question? I'm sorry. I I missed the first.
Town meeting discussion, any questions for?
I'll be there.
For tomorrow night?
With bells on.
Chris, Heather, do you have anything for tomorrow?
Um.
I do not.
You do?
I do not.
Okay, Chris?
I don't know.
Okay. We'll move to the uh town administrator report.
Okay, very briefly, uh, so the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, a number of small towns have been seeking a consultant to administer the ARPA funds, uh, make sure that we comply with all the federal requirements and state requirements for that money. The Monticuce Regional Planning Commission has prepared an RFP to be released in November for a consultant who's served the small towns. Uh, the results will be reported to you and funding would come from Marfa itself if you so chose to go in that direction. Center School Roof Project is clipping along, we're getting close to the end.
David, on the ARPA, do we have all the members in the committee assigned yet? Because I know we had said, I think we had made a motion at one of the meetings that the representative committees were gonna pick their humans and send them over.
Yeah, so the Finance Committee has their member, Planning Board has their member. Uh, the Select Board, that is a member and the at-large person has been uh approved by the Select Board.
Mike Foley, right?
Yeah.
Do we know when their first meeting's gonna be?
Soon, right after special town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we're still waiting for the final, final regulations from the US Treasury, so. We did the memorial, we did the right-of-way project. We have a public meeting scheduled for Monday, November eighth, at six thirty PM in the senior center. When I say we, this is the committee that's uh working on this project. So if people are coming to you, and they're coming to me, if people are coming to you and asking, what is this letter about easements and uh encroachment on my property, this is an informational opportunity uh for people to hear the same thing from the same people.
David, on the cell phone tow- on the cell tower, we had talked about that the last meeting. I know you sent out an email with some of the answers to the question. And because we had re- originally received the email from. And because we had re- originally received the email from, um, Mike at Dispatch relative to whether or not we were going to waive the permit fees.
Yeah, so we've been working with the electrical contractor in order to get the electrical permit going. I have not had that conversation with the, uh, with Mr. Moriarty of the district.
Okay.
Um.
Because I know in your email you had sent that, you know, you believe that they would likely, based on the contract we have with Gardner, get the entire, uh, permit fee of, um,
Well, maybe half of it, I, I think it would, I think it would be a negotiation.
So. And is there enough money that's currently in the grant that's over at Dispatch that would cover that?
I would expect so for a project of that size. They're talking about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. The contingency certainly should have, uh, covered that, uh, amount of money.
Okay, so then the position at this point is that we would not waive that permit fee?
That's a decision of the board.
Okay.
That the board has not made.
Okay, is that something the board needs to discuss tonight under new business or something we need to, or can wait till next time for?
If it can wait, I would recommend that we do that as opposed to lengthening our meeting tonight when we have another one tomorrow night, but.
So I always like to get these things done as quickly as possible, but it sounds like we need to spend a little bit more time, uh, on this.
So we better wait on that part of it than waiving anything, okay?
So our next meeting's in two weeks?
November first.
So is this going to hold up breaking ground?
I don't think so.
Okay, are they, do they have a date yet for breaking ground?
No, it's not until we get the permits in hand.
Do we have an ETA with permits in hands? Do we have an ETA for anything?
Uh, let me make a bunch of phone calls tomorrow and remind people that we're still without, uh, cell phone, phone service here in Hubbardston.
Yeah, 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 you're buddy, yeah. Yeah.
Anything, anything further?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I have a couple more questions, I'm sorry. Um, the affordable housing project, the last we talked was back in August. I think VHB was evaluating the extent of the contamination, possible remedies. Do we have any updates on that?
Yes, they've sent us a proposal. Uh, the, the immediate remediation is, uh, for fifteen hundred dollars. Um, but they're, they're also talking about a much bigger project, which would be thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, I'm going to sit with Dan and, and find out if, how, you know, well, what, what, what are we asking for here? How are we going to fund it? What's absolutely necessary? The absolutely necessary part is going to be fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So we can afford that.
Okay.
Uh, but do we need to take this, the other step for the larger scope of work?
Alright, so that will land on the next meeting on November first?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had for a question.
Okay. Moving right along then, uh, we have no policies to review. Matt is not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Public press, questions or answers from anybody?
Oh.
Yes?
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, just one more thing on the, um, not anticipated. So one of the information pieces in our packet was on one oh seven Gardner Road. It's not on the agenda, but relative to the auto license, that's still out there with the parking?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thanks, thanks for that reminder. Um, so we've received a diagram from the building inspector showing the proposed parking for one oh seven Gardner. Um, I think we're in a place where we can sign the class two permit. Uh, if you would kindly sign that, and I think you've already voted on this issue.
Has the fire, fire chief signed off? Because I think he was the, he had it last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the, the, they both haven't physically signed off yet, but they are going to come in and sign off tomorrow and everything is good to go. They both accepted it.
Okay, so the building commissioner's email that seemed a little wishy-washy was really he's good, the part, if we're good with the parking plan, then he's good with everything?
It seems, it seems so, and it doesn't seem fair to the business to withhold the license.
Yep. Okay. I agree.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on the parking plan or are we good as long as no one objects?
I think, I think we're good.
Do we, we already, do we sign on that one or no?
No.
You didn't sign it, but, uh, you voted.
I don't have a. We voted, okay, so we don't have to sign it. No.
We voted, contingent.
Nope.
No, the class two, yeah, that just has the building commissioner and the fire, yeah, okay.
Okay. Sir, you got a question?
Sure. Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road, couple of administrative items, um, and I might have missed this because I wasn't taking notes and just trying to listen. But, um, when I got up to speak, I think there was a motion on the floor to accept the monument bid. I don't know that you voted on that.
Yes, we did, yeah.
Okay, then I missed that, sorry.
We did.
And the second thing is, um, to the point of the moderator and allowing guests or other interested people to speak, I actually addressed that with the moderator last, uh, annual town meeting. I've been both to special town meetings and annual meetings as an interested citizen and property owner, but not a resident. And I just have to sit off to the side. I have to address the moderator, and the moderator said, yes, you know, you can announce you're a property owner and a interested citizen, and I will recognize you. So, I mean, that's from my own personal, I mean, you, you can verify that with counsel and the moderator, but that's how it was explained to me. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing. No public press or anything, then motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? We have a quorum here, don't we?
Yes.
Yes.
See you all.
We didn't have to vote on that parking thing, did we?
The what?
To approve the parking thing, did we?
You already made a motion that said.
We did.
Okay, yeah, that is fine, okay.
Yes, we were ready.
Yeah.
It was just, like, it was in the packet and it would, like, mess me up earlier to, nah, I'm just making sure I include it everything.
See you all tomorrow night.
That's fine.
What, what's the quorum for, um,
Fifty.
the special town meeting?
Fifty. We know, because we did not hit that.
Because I know other ones, you guys were out beating the streets, uh, a couple of times.
Yes.
Do you think there's enough interest that?
Let's hope.
Fifty was.
Let's hope either everybody get on the phone and call somebody, like we did last time.
Okay. Um, right. Thank you, everyone.
So we made a vote.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. We did, um, meeting's over, but, um, I brought my dog in, and normally I would have gotten here earlier and see if.